One. Sorry for the good times we're having with technology today. So, um, want to thank everybody for. Want to thank everybody for your time, um, this afternoon to learn about the latest version of our state plan. And be able to talk a little bit about what it is, why we use it and discuss the opportunity to give public comment around the state plan. So again, my name is Courtney Penn. I'm the Director of the Office of Early Childhood and Out of School Learning, a Division of Family and Social Services Administration here with the State of Indiana. Again, as I shared, um, just a second ago, the purpose of today's meeting is to go into and to review and the and to get public comment regarding the proposed Indiana State CCDF Childcare Development Fund, um, state plan for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven. And then again, you all are muted, but we encourage you to share your thoughts in the chat. We will taking questions and comments and adding those to the list of comments that we've already received through the public comment. Procedures. And again, just please make sure if you do have something to please, we encourage you to use the chat and we'll also be sharing another way to help for you to be able to engage with us with any public comments that you may have. So I want to talk a little bit about the Childcare Development Fund. So again, CCDF is what you hear many people refer to it as. So this fund was established through with a blend of federal and state partnership programs with states all across the country who leverage this childcare development and block grant, also known as CCDBG, to administer funds to be able to offer, offer childcare focused early care and education, resources, tools, vouchers, all of the in and between to support the needs of families. And that funding comes through the administration of children and families. So again, these are the federal dollars that we receive as a state to be able to offer the opportunities that come through the Office of Early Childhood and Out of School Learning to support early care and education. So we use these funds to provide assistance to, um, low income families to access childcare so that they are able to work and pursue their educational aspirations, um, again, while promoting learning environments, strong learning environments that support quality learning and lifelong learning for children. So as we, another thing to recognize about this is that also these fundings are to invest in our quality efforts. And so we have the ability to use these quality dollars to drive the quality implementation of our practices in our state, also support the workforce workforce of early care and education in Indiana, and also providing consumer education opportunities as well, so that families have great opportunities to learn more about what to expect, what to look for, et cetera, et cetera, when looking for the childcare that best meets their child's and their family's needs. So again, I want to talk a little bit more about, um, the actual CCDF plan. So on the previous slide, we talked about what the funding is and what we are funded in Indiana to be able to use the funds for. So this slide really talks more about the actual plan that we're referring to. So you will hear many of us refer to this as our state's application, which it is. This is our way to get to those federal dollars. This is Indiana's way of saying, these are the things that we plan to do. And if, when given the funding to be able to drive this work here in our state, these, this is how we plan to implement the areas that the Office of Childcare, our funder, um, has deemed priorities and strategic components of what the state plan should have, because those are the best practice drivers of ultimately of child out, great child outcomes, support for families and other and other examples. And so it's really important to really understand really the importance of this document. And it's a pretty lengthy document. We are aware of that, but it's it's lengthy because it has so many opportunities within it to see how our respective state does drive the work of using these dollars. Each state has their own state plan and how they respond to it, but the very core out outputs of the plans remain the same. And we'll talk a little bit about that as I go into the actual intricate parts of what is included in the plan, but just from a holistic standpoint, the understanding that, you know, these things are the drivers of our work. And this is our way of telling the Office of Childcare, our federal funder, how we plan to implement those. Um, the plan outlines our approach again to the child eligibility, enrollment, subsidy rates, our health and safety, so our licensing guidelines, provider payment practices, so our true cost of care rates, the quality improvement, so our quality rating system past the quality here in the state of Indiana. And again, back to that consumer education piece. Um, and definitely don't want to forget about the funding that we also have to provide robust service delivery, training, technical assistance, all those things that live within our funded partners who help drive the work that we do every single day, every single day, with not only helping with eligibility, but also the training and coaching that we that is received. All those things funnel through and are funded through, um, our federal dollars. So we are required to post at the submitted, post the submitted and final approved plans, um, which we will talk about that a little bit more on the next slide, but it is important to know that, again, this is public information. We, it is out there for consumption. Um, and as we develop amendments to these plans, because even after this one is final and approved, anytime there's any changes to the plan, we then submit those changes and the system where we put the state plan, our Office of Childcare Regional Office approves it. And then once we have an approval, even to those amendments, we repost the plan. And so the most current version of the plan is always out there for public consumption on our FSSA, Family and Social Services Administration, Oui Castle webpage. So as I mentioned, Indiana's CCDF state plan, so right now, because it is always up for public consumption and out there for public knowledge, our current twenty-two, twenty-four state plan is out there live on our FSSA webpage. You see the information here. Um, and then again, the proposed state plan, the one that's out for public comment is also out for your review and the ability to be able to give public comment based on what's in the plan. Again, I just want to reiterate again that these are really living documents. Um, there is not, but we submit it and nobody looks at it again for the next two years. This is a living document. Again, as updates and things happen, we go back and make changes, um, and then again repost those so that the air is current as possible when people are reviewing them. So on this next slide, we will see the timeline for sharing and submitting the state plan. So currently we have it out now, mentioned that, um, we have it out right now for people to be able to review and give public comment. We have been promoting it, uh, and will continue to promote it in Monday Must Know and other opportunities. Our partners have been sharing it out, information, um, and they have also been asked to give, um, some great input based on their seat and their level of expertise and the subject matter expertise that they bring to the table. Um, also, we are having today, you'll see June twentieth, today's public hearing is listed on this timeline. And then we have given the timeline for submitting and receiving public comment. That timeline is those, the timeline for that is the twenty-fifth of June of this month at five P M Eastern Standard Time, because we then will take the public comments that we've received up and through then, which we have been collecting all this time, um, and we'll grab those pieces and put them, review the feedback and make those considerations for what needs to go into any kind of possible updates to the state plan. So that twenty-fifth timeline gives us time to do that, um, because we do have to submit the state plan to our, again, the Office of Childcare, our funder by June thirtieth. And so then the next step after that, so we submit it actually through a system, we don't email it in a through Outlook or anything like that. It actually gets put into an actual system, loaded into an actual system, um, piece by piece. Uh, and then we have from July first, so again, submitting it on June thirtieth, we have from July first until September thirtieth for there to be a back and forth, um, feedback loop from the Office of Childcare back to FSSA, Oui Castle, to be able to be responsive if there's questions, if there's things that need more clarity, um, and so forth. And then the goal is that this plan will take effect, uh, October first, which is the beginning of our fiscal new calendar year. One of the things I think that's very important to call in as we look at the plan development is that as we developed the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven state plan, that we didn't just do this in a alone, right? We did this in collaboration with very strategic people in the development of the process. The people you on this call are part of that plan development as you're able to give public comment and give feedback and input as well to be reviewed. So again, for the purposes of what this plan is to do, we especially want to make sure that we're leaning into families as all this work ultimately drives itself back to ensuring that, ensuring that families have safe quality environments for their children to grow and thrive in. And so also early care and educate, our early care and education providers, so our mixed delivery system, right? Being able to give impact, input and feedback because families have to have a provider to attend in order to get those robust, high-quality childcare settings. We've also leveraged our system partners, so those stakeholders who are there to help support the work of this field through their respective avenues. We also have connections with and lean into support with our tribal collaboration. So to be able to think through what happens, uh, what's, what's going on on our end versus the state plan that they also, tribes also have to submit their own state plan. And so where are their avenues for collaboration? Where are there things just to be in ensure that we're all on the same page, um, as many of the tribal, um, childcare programmers are also licensed through Oui Castle, so making sure that, you know, we're, we're in sync there as well. So that's a very important piece. Our Early Learning Advisory Committee, so that partnership with the Early Learning Advisory Committee, um, to be able to get their buy, their buy-in, their way in on the state plan was very important as well, as they helped work along with this office and the Office of Kindergarten Readiness and the Department of Education to really drive home those, um, early care and education deliverables. That was a very important piece as well. Um, so again, our partnership with the Department of Education, as we work through our next steps, as we continue to partner together to help drive the work of this early care and education space. And then last but certainly not least, ensuring that the Governor's Office, FSSA Leadership, all those in leadership in Indiana have an opportunity to put their input in and be part of the process so that they are aware of how we are saying we are representing the state of Indiana through the CCDF funding and, and making sure that we are in alignment with what we are doing with the funding in order to be effective in this space. So I mentioned earlier, we were going to go a little, dig a little deeper into the actual what's included in the plan, and that's what we're going to do on these next few slides. So I'll go a little high level, um, for each of these buckets, just to kind of put life to some of these pieces. I know that we have had, I have had the opportunity to see some of the initial responses um, and feedback from some people. And one of the questions that I thought was really interesting and made sense, uh, was why when we create the plan, why isn't it bucketed in a way that appears or seems more like how we've structured our state infrastructure and our current priorities um, that are out right now. Great question. Um, this template is developed by the Office of Childcare. We don't, we don't develop it. These ten priority areas again are developed, are were created based upon those core areas that we are funded to be responsive to. So these, these are bucketed out in this way so that we can respond very strategically to each one, um, in its respective, um, area. And so the very first one is the CCDF Program Administration. So that really is, that's where you get your who, who is it, who does it, where are they, what's their email? So that includes my information, um, Dr. Resiniak as the Secretary of FSSA. As, um, also as we support this state, state CCDF administration, our contact information is on there, information about our office. So really that first part is really more so of a who's, who's doing what, where can you find them, what's their contact information, and just an overview of who we are, and again, the work that we do with our strategic partners to help drive the work. To, for number two and two and three, we really are talking more of your, what's the equitable eligibility processes that you have in place? How are you supporting enrollment? How are you doing things in a way that there are, uh, that supports the work of the field so that families um, have access to, to eligibility? How does that eligibility happen? And all those processes and procedures that touch, touch those kind of outputs. The next piece is that affordability piece. So then for that, we look to see like, what is Indiana doing in a way that makes it affordable and accessible, right? So again, that kind of tees itself in at number four as well. So those FPLs, what are those market rates? What are our payment practices? So how do we ensure that the CCDF dollars that we get from the federal government are getting into the hands of the providers as they, as payment for the services that they are rendering, rendering really on behalf of the Office of Childcare through Oui Castle to be able to fund those opportunities. And so again, back to that parent choice piece, what kind of opportunities do parents have? We have a mixed delivery system on purpose, right? So parents have opportunities depending on what their unique family childcare, child-specific, unique needs, religious beliefs, like all those things bucketed, bucketed into that parental choice piece. And so how are we making sure that that section four is really asking a lot about that ac- access piece? And in the equity across the board and also again, our payment rates and how we are, um, reimbursing for the work that's happening in there. Health and safety for number five, that is really your, that's your licensure, how are you regulating each provider type? So some of that section will somewhat seem redundant at times because some things are duplicative depending on what's being asked across different program types. Really, the, the goal of this is to really help understand how we regulate to each provider type, the way that we do it. And what is our standard, our rules, our laws that are connected back to those that help us be in compliance with what the Office of Childcare deems a requirement in order to say that a facility is in fact health and, health and safety. Uh, and those even include what trainings we produce, what resources we produce, et cetera. What are we requiring people to do and have that help meet those health and safety requirements? Um, for number six, you'll see the support of a skilled, qualified and compensated childcare workforce. So again, that one's going back to how are we ensuring that childcare providers, educators are getting the trainings that are needed? How, how are we ensuring that we're providing robust professional development opportunities and other components that help drive the work of the field? There are opportunities even within there that will have us be very detailed in what we ask for, what we look for out on, when we're out in the field regulating, um, childcare programs, what we're doing within our partnerships to support and drive, um, the work of the field and so forth. Um, number seven is really your quality rating system and what are you doing to impact quality? Again, I share this with many, uh, the, the goal here is not just to say QRIS, but it's also what other pieces even within your licensure are you embedding quality metrics into? What are your, again, back to your trainings, what trainings are you doing that support the fact that you can, you can adequately say, um, that childcare providers, um, are being held to a different standard. They're being held to a different standard, which then aligns to some, some sort of, um, quality rating metric, metric. Right? Every state again is set up so completely different. Some have a quality system like us, some have quality metrics built in in other ways, but it ultimately, it all boils down to how are you as a state ensuring the fact that if you say something, some, a childcare provider is a level three, or if you say a childcare provider is a licensed childcare center, how are you ensuring the fact that they are meeting the quality metrics that the Office of Childcare would also say is, is, um, ensure is in fact a quality childcare setting where those vouchers should be going to, to fund, um, that particular programming? Um, number eight is really the lead agencies coordination, again, back to that partnership piece, knowing that we're not just doing this in a silo, that we're doing this in partnership with strategic partners across the state to embed this work. And how are we, how are we leveraging them? Those partners and what are those partners doing specifically to support the work of the field? For example, Spark Learning Lab, for example, we would clearly define out they, they are a training and technical assistance vendor. They provide training for childcare staff to help them as they work with our most vulnerable populations of, in our children. And so what? So just thinking about that as a specific example, there, again, another one could be the local childcare resource and referral agencies. We fund them to provide family engagement specialists to help all families have access to high-quality childcare and help them find where quality childcare seats and capacity opportunities exist in their respective region. So those are just two examples of how we are funded to do those things and it's our, it's our opportunity really and our um, need to go in there and make sure as we're completing the state plan to make that very clear as to what those dollars are going towards and what they're doing. Number nine, that family outreach and that consumer education. Again, some of that, some of these things kind of tee on each other a little bit. Um, for example, consumer education really, really speaks back to some of the quality metrics, right? Our quality rating system past the quality is really a consumer education tool that allows us to put a a stamp of approval, if you will, or a stamp of quality on a particular program that says we have gone out, done our due diligence and this location is this level on past the quality, this location is a licensed or regulated program so that parents are aware of what that means and what that looks like when they go out to either, whether it's using CCDF dollars or private funds, this one is ensuring that no matter what, that we, we have put our stamp of approval on a program and so that we've done some of the legwork already for a program. Again, there's always opportunities for what makes the most sense for the family and leaning into their unique needs. But the goal of this particular one is how are we outreach to families? How are we equipping them to even know what to look for in programming? Again, the family engagement opportunity, how are we staffing either our own staff or, um, staffing throughout the state through our vended partners to ensure that this work is happening? And even at the eligibility offices, right? Like do families have the education that they need even about what does it take to be eligible on CCDF and what are the resources, what resources are out there to support families? And then last but certainly not least, number ten, the program integrity and accountability. That is a fancy way of saying that we must make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do with the dollars. And what systems do we have in place to ensure that the dollars that are going out are going to regulated environments, are going to the appropriate places, are doing what we said that they would do within this plan, right? So what are the metrics? What are the parameters that we have in place to ensure that people are doing the right, not only us, but people we give these funds to are using them in appropriate ways and, 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 and that we can then go back and say that we have done our internal auditing processes, which we do. We have auditing staff that help us make sure these checks and balances are in place, which we do. So again, number ten is really an opportunity for Indiana to shine and really share those things that we have in place to ensure the appropriate use of funding. So I do want to talk just quickly about examples of some of the additions, because you you heard, hopefully, heard me say earlier that these state plans are not one and done, right? You do them and they'll, you can be up to three or four or five amendments, depending on how many things are needing to be added or changed. And so I will say that some of the new additions, um, that are coming into this particular new state plan, for example, are those legislative changes that happened July one because of the timing of and these are just some examples, because of the timing, again, that we know that the June thirtieth time, we will be loading this into the system for final, for final submission, for submission, I shouldn't say final, for submission on June thirty-third. So those things that are effective July one, not necessarily in our current plan. So there's that overlap, right? And so that is one example of something that is in the new state plan based on the timing. Again, pay by enrollment is something that is now added. Again, back to the example of what the Office of Childcare is looking for within the, within the body of the state plan, that piece around how we pay providers, that pay by enrollment is an example of what, what, what goes into that section? How are you paying them? We pay by enrollment, not versus attendance. And then so on. So those kind of, that information, again, the, all these things in the state plan are things that are effective either after we've submitted it or most definitely by that October first date when this plan will be effective. Again, childcare management system, CCMS, sharing about ways, resources, how we help with childcare providers bottom line, how we assist providers with their programming, how this, this could be, this business practice is impactful to helping them with their workforce, with their family, um, educator pieces. So again, this CCMS work is more, is it holistic piece that gets added into something that we are using CCDF funding to help drive the work of the field. And then anytime we update training or technical assistance support, so anytime we make any changes to actually rules, regulations, laws, training, anything that um, needs to have an, an impact that has a change, we have to, we then go and let, uh, let the Office of Childcare know. Now, that doesn't mean every time we drop, we add a training into Indiana Learning Pass as an amendment to the, to, to the, to the state plan. This means anytime there's a required change, like for example, the health and safety modules, if for some reason the stars align and we decide to make the modules eleven, twelve instead of we decide to make a twelfth content area, or the Office of Childcare does, decide to make that eleven, twelve, and we have to then go in and make changes to that training, we then have to make sure that our state plan reflects that change because a lot of these components are then things that they review during our monitoring visit. And so, again, so I just talked about some of the updates that are reflective in the state plan. And this slide right here is just holistically a reflection of updates to the previous state plan. So the twenty-two, or the current one, I should say, twenty-two, twenty-four state plan versus the one that is proposed now, which is the twenty-two, twenty-seven plan. When we, when we had multiple opportunities to talk to, even attend webinars with the Office of Childcare about the state plan, these were some of the key things that they honed in on, right? So this structure is a lot more aligned with the state plan and the monitoring requirements. So we actually, the state of Indiana just had a federal monitoring visit um, earlier this year. And so when they say the monitoring requirements, they're referring to, um, the monitoring that happens every three, every three years, where the Office of Childcare not only looks at our state plan, but also looks at all the components that we say that we're going to do. Again, we're held accountable for everything that we say that we're, we say that we are doing. And we must show documentation, um, whether it be written documentation or actual onsite or some sort of, um, in the system documentation, I should say, that reflects that we are doing what we say we will do in this state plan. So the Office of Childcare is trying to build more cohesive alignment between what the state plan structure and the cadence of the topic areas within the state plan in alignment with the monitoring requirements. So it's a little less clunky that way, and it has more connectivity. More emphasis on payment practices. One thing you will see throughout the plan and throughout this final CCDF rules and all things Office of Childcare is an increased emphasis on payment practices. Again, back to that whole how are you paying providers? And what are you doing to impact their fiscal bottom line? How, how are we helping drive the work of getting the workforce, the childcare workforce in a, in a better state of more sustainable, um, practices? And so that's really what that driver is. And then also an increased emphasis on information about business and program supports. So another thing is, I, I kind of teased it up a little bit on this last slide, previous slide about the childcare management system. The Office of Childcare loves to hear opportunities where the state is being innovative and collaborative with childcare partners, to childcare providers, to think about a way that we help them in a more holistic manner, be above and beyond the, the payment of vouchers. How are we helping them drive their business practices in a way that is in a sustainable way? I just mentioned those CCDF final rules, and so there were just like childcare providers have rules, we have rules we have to adhere to as well, which is what the state plan is. And so we have updated 2024 final rules that took place, that went into effect April 30th of this year. And many of those, just as I mentioned on the previous slide, have everything and many things to do with how we enroll families and how we pay providers. And so we have kudos to the Oui Castle team. We have done a lot of the things already or have already, many of the things in motion already, which includes pay by enrollment versus attendance. Again, trying to get providers in a more stable, bring that stabilization to their funding, to their businesses. Those are the drivers behind these final rules and also access for families. What are the barriers that prevent families from being able to access subsidy? And what are the ways that we can enhance our systems, enhance our processes in a way that makes that a less cumbersome processes? Process for families and providers as well. And again, we ultimately there are some fiscal components that go to many of the changes. And so we have applied for a temporary waiver that gives us up to two years to implement these changes to get our office, to get Indiana and a fiscal space to be able to make these, to implement some of these changes that do have a fiscal impact to them. And so do want to make sure that that is widely aware because as you will see at, in our final submission of the state plan, in our submission of the state plan and the one that ends up being posted, once it is official, there will be some messaging around there. So we want to make sure that that's really clear as to why you will see or hear or know that Indiana has gone for a waiver. It's not because we are waving it off because we don't want to do these things. Many of these things we are actually already have in process and are already doing in our state. And then others have some timely things that need system enhancements, such as the work that we're doing with our IN Kids system. So trying to align that timing as well with the timing of rolling out of some of these things is also, and honestly, a lot of it just needs to take place in a succession of a way that doesn't feel like everything's happening all at once to families and providers. And so just really trying to stair step out that process as well so that it makes sense. So here, here you'll see on the screen, some of the actual, the actual things that we've requested waivers for, for your awareness. So again, one of the things where I talked about as far as the fiscal impact, this first one here on this bulleted one is one of the heavy ones here. So the copayments being capped at 7% of family income. So ensuring that families pay no more than 7% of their family income for their copayment of their vouchers. The pay practices, again, another piece that part, pay by enrollment is part of that process and part of the things we're being asked to do. But there's other layers to that that continue to drive payment practices that get families, I'm sorry, providers paid in advance or at the beginning of delivery of services. Which is even the next step above, if you will, or an additional step, I should say above, an additional step of where we already are, where we're going with pay by enrollment. So again, all these, putting all these processes in place that get us in, in compliance with these final rules. And then grants or contracts for direct services for infant and toddlers. And so we have previously done contracted slots and things like that previously. So that's not something that's foreign to our state. We have done those in the, in the past. I think this is just a way of looking at that in a more at, at a different way and losing those, like the goal here for the Office of Childcare is to be as strategic as possible with the CCDF dollars that we receive to ensure that those places, that those particular age groupings and those needs are met in a very strategic and a very specifically targeted, targeted way. So I shared a lot of information and so I, I would encourage you all, I think the search feature has, is always have been my friend with state plan, even I, I, even when I pull it up to use it for my day-to-day work, when I'm looking for something to see exactly what we said or go back to it to make sure that I'm tracking with something that we put in the state plan. I will put a specific word or topic into the search engine, into the search of the document in order to find it quickly. So that's a little tool for the trade, if you will. So we are now again, accepting public comment on this 2025-27 state plan until June 25th at 5:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Please place your comments, suggestions and concerns in that chat in the chat window. If you have some that you think here in this webinar, if you have some that come to you after you've had time to sit with that lengthy document for a while and have some additional comments, please know that we also still welcome your comments to be emailed to us through the OECOSLProviderInquiry@fsaa.in.gov email. Thank you, Sam, for throwing that in the chat. Again, we would love to hear from you all and appreciate your time today. And just want to thank you. And again, here's the email. If you have any questions, even outside of the public comment that you may have, but definitely feel free to email the Oui Castle Provider Inquiry inbox with your public comment if you weren't able to put something in the chat today. And we will be grabbing the comments from the chat today and adding them to the list of already, of the public comments that we've already received. And we'll have all that information together. It'd be remiss for me to say that there may be opportunity for something you asked for or requested or put in the public comment that may not magically appear in the state plan. Because we also then too have to submit things and have them approved in the state plan. So I just want to share that awareness. If someone has a comment that you may not necessarily see directly reflected in the state plan, that's because there are other processes that go along with that. But that does not mean that we have not heard it and that we did not take it into, and take it into account as we develop the overall plan. And as, and most specifically, as we approach the actual implementation of the things that we put in the plan. So. All right. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration for additions to the state plan and your public comment. And want to thank you for your time and have a great rest of your day. Thank you so much.